Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM, actually it's still 6:59. On Thursday, October 16th, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. I ask that everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Folks, welcome, everyone. We have the approval of the minutes from September 30th, 2025. It's a regular meeting. All good?
Yeah.
All good. We have the approval of tonight's agenda. Good? All good. Excellent. Okay, we're up to public participation. Any member of the public would like to speak. We ask that you step to the podium, state your name and your street name, and you have a three-minute limit. No? Anyway, I will do it again at the end. Very good. Board and Administrative Communications Chairman's report. Just a few things, and I won't mention some of the things that I think our student representatives mentioned, so I'll pass those. I just want to reiterate the value of our homeschool connection and the belief that children do better when there is that collaboration from home. And it's as simple as asking your kid when they come home and they dread this question, "How was your day?" And don't take "okay" as an answer. They need to reiterate how their day was, and you need to hold them accountable for that. And I think it's a really valuable five minutes, and you stay connected with them and how they're doing in school. So hopefully, we really up the communication with ourselves and our children, and taking pride in our school, and focusing on being solution-oriented. It's easy to, you know, point their problems, but let's, as a community, work on how do we fix things, as opposed, particularly in this election season, there's a lot of noise out there. So let's stay focused on what we need to do to make our district better. We've gotten some really good data in the recent weeks, and let's just keep that momentum going. Okay? On that note, I'll pass it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, everyone, and tonight I just want to, on behalf of the principals, provide an update on our community read of the anxious generation. We've been working with staff and having conversations at the staff level during professional learning. Those will continue into our next professional learning day. But the principals have just informed me that they're pleased to announce that they'll be having a conversation facilitated by the elementary school on November 14th at 9:15 AM. That conversation, the location is to be determined, but the community will be welcomed at that meeting. That meeting will be held outside of the school at an alternate venue such as, hopefully, the senior center, perhaps downstairs. The second opportunity for families is November 21st at 9:00 AM. This one will be held at the schools. This is for the high school, middle school will be facilitating this one. And this would be only for families, for students. But we do welcome the community to come out on November 14th, and we look forward to the conversation. And board members certainly are welcome at these events. So excited to continue to have that conversation about students and wellness.
Yeah, that's important. Thanks. Student Representatives' report.
Hi, so several announcements today. The first one is that tomorrow is the World Language Department field trip to the Met. The 23rd is Senior Kickstart. Also, the 23rd and 24th are parent-teacher conferences for the high schools, so there's early dismissal on the 23rd and late arrival on the 24th. The fall play is CLU, and we'll be playing October 30th through November 2nd. Application Free Day for Connecticut is November 1st. New Fairfield High School World Language Club's Fall Vendor Festival is November 1st. The CTE Career and Manufacturing Roadshow is November 12th, and the Connecticut Community College Visit Day for the Danbury and Waterbury campuses is November 19th.
Thank you, Ellen.
Hi, everyone. So I wanted to talk about the Student Empowerment Day Conference, and sponsored by the CAS and CIAC, on October 20th. So the theme is to empower minds, ignite joy, and this is an event that is designed to celebrate and elevate the students' voices, engage in powerful panel discussions, and to participate in interactive breakout sessions to focus on identity, purpose, and leadership development. And it helps our students strive to help get back to our community and help take what they learn from these conferences, collaborate with other schools, and kind of bring it back to our school to show what they've learned. We also have our PSAT Day. It's fundamental to our instruction program, and it gives each student the opportunity to demonstrate their growth in reading, writing, and math. It's important to helping us prepare for the SAT and other assessments that are important to post-high school goals, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
And, Helen, we did get you your nameplate for today. We made it official.
Yeah, I noticed. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay, we are up to committee reports. Business Ops, Resource Management. Standing in for Greg is Ed.
Yeah, the Business Operations Resource Management Subcommittee met earlier this evening. We covered a couple of items, first being the fiscal year '27 budget assumptions, which we'll be covering in our agenda this evening, item 7D. The other item we covered was the monthly summary of budget versus actual expenditures, encumbrances for the current fiscal year '25-'26, as of the end of September. Basically, where we stand currently is we've expended and encumbered approximately 78% of our budget, and that's compared to 70% last year, and the main reason for that increase is that we prepaid our first student transportation, and which allowed us to get a 1% discount by prepaying. So that's where we're at. This will level out as we move forward in the coming months. That was it.
Thank you very much. No liaison reports tonight. We're up to information items. First one is New Fairfield High School Consolidated School Building Project Updates. Carrie.
Just a very quick, exciting update for the elementary school. The playground is complete and ready for inspection, and it's scheduled for 11 o'clock on Saturday. So we're very cautiously optimistic. We're going to be playing on the playground very, very soon.
Nice. The weather was very cooperative.
It was. It looks great out there. I've been out there a few times, so.
Very nice. Good news.
It's great. Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, next item is the Student Outcomes Report 2025.
Thank you. So as James is coming to the podium, I'll just preface this by saying this is the companion report following up on the standardized testing report from last month. We do want to showcase the outstanding achievements of a class of 2025, and we have students taking a variety of different pathways, as James will point out this evening.
Thanks, Ben.
So, James, take it away.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The first thing you will notice is that I am not Mrs. Kim Loughlin, who would normally be here doing the presentation. She's actually still at school, handling a sensitive situation for us. So we appreciate all that our school counselors and support staff do to support our students and families, as in tonight, often as in tonight, well into the evening hours. So as we get started, as Dr. Cross said, you know, we want to highlight, you know, the achievements of the class of 2025, as we do each year after our, you know, classes graduate, and we want to let the public know what they are doing, but also highlight the efforts that our school counselors make, you know, and many of the improvements that they've presented here over the years, and are appreciative that the board has made, you know, many investments in our school counseling program at the high school, and they're clearly paying dividends. So the first thing we will talk about is, you know, where exactly they went. So last year, you know, and the next slide will also highlight this, you know, very proud of the different pathways that our students take after high school. So 73% of the class went on to four-year colleges, 18% on to two-year college or trade school, and about 10%, 9% or 10% that went into the military or employment or had other plans for after high school. And so, you know, obviously, as a comprehensive public high school, we're very proud that our students feel that they can, you know, pursue many avenues after they graduate from our school. On this slide, we went back five years, just, you know, so you'd get a sense of what the trends are for our students. And this is, you know, pretty much holding with our trends over the last few years. You know, in the years, right after COVID, we saw a little bit of bump in college, you know, admissions. And I think around the country, we saw that, you know, partially because students didn't necessarily know what to do, college admissions had, you know, the landscape was changing. One of the things that, you know, the counselors would tell you is that, you know, things are settling again in that world, and they're, you know, so that's good news. But also, you know, we do see an uptick in the number of students that are going to trade school and pursuing those pathways, and that's something that you'll see, I think, is also a direct result of some of the outreach and the programming that we've been able to do. So in terms of college applications, though, sticking to college, you know, still averaging, you know, you know, pretty much consistent over the years of, you know, around 10 colleges, you know, a little more than 10 colleges that each graduate applies to. Not every single graduate applies to college, obviously. But I think, you know, in terms of, and when we, when Kim talks to other schools, that's a healthy number. It's not 20. It's not, you know, students are really focusing, and they're working with their counselors, they're working with their families to identify, you know, both schools that might be reaches or schools that, you know, they feel very comfortable applying to. And so, you know, we feel like that's a healthy number in that, you know, students aren't overapplying or, you know, not pursuing enough options for what they want to do post-high school. In terms of some of those college acceptances, you know, our students apply to many colleges, as you saw, and were accepted to over 185 different colleges and are attending over 65 different universities. We've had students, you know, accepted to all of the, you know, Connecticut State schools as well as, and you have this in, I know, in your slides, so I don't need to read all of them, but it's really an impressive list of schools when you think about the scope of Ivy League schools, highly competitive large private schools, competitive regional schools, you know, research, you know, state research universities. It really is an impressive list, you know. So we're obviously, you know, very proud of our graduates and the work that not only the counselors, but the teachers and families do to set the stage for students to have these types of world-class options. In terms of frequency, so where our students attend, very similar to past years. Most, when you look at the most attended schools, you know, most of our students stay in the region within Connecticut, which, you know, I also view as a good thing. You know, one of the things we worry about in our state is brain drain. You know, our best students, you know, leaving and going too far from home, so it's good to have many of our graduates stay. But you also see an impressive list of, you know, students where three or, you know, two to three of our graduates, obviously our classes aren't huge. But again, you see a really wide scope of different types of schools and different areas of the country and the East Coast that our students are attending, and, you know, they're, again, accepted into some very, you know, prestigious and competitive institutions. So in terms of when we think about what that means for not only our guidance offerings but our curriculum, you know, we're preparing students to be able to, you know, move on again to that next stage. Working on two computers here, so I apologize for the lag in the slides. So one of the things that, you know, Kim wanted to highlight and very particularly proud of, and I'll actually give a shout-out to our guidance department that she may not have. One of the things that Kim gets to do is collaborate with guidance directors from high schools, not only in the SWC, so in our league, but she's also part of a DURG A and B head of counseling group. And one of the things that, you know, she came back beaming from the last meeting was we're impressing with our investments a lot of schools in the amount of time we're able to spend with our students and the way that we're able to incorporate student voice, and really not only meet the college and career aspects of the guidance program, but also wellness and helping students with decision-making and having counselors make contact, you know, multiple times during the school year with students, which is not the case at all, high school. So we're very, very proud of that. So some things that have happened over the last year since we last presented about incorporating student voice. You see the Alumni Return Day panel, which is a great experience. You get the unvarnished truth from some of our recent alumni about what college and post-high school life is like, and that is a diverse panel of not only college attendees, but students that have gone on into the trades or gone right into a career. So our, you know, so this year, our seniors will get to experience that again, to hear from recent graduates, and how they were prepared, what they would have done the same, what they would have done differently. Career panel, our Junior Jump Start Admissions Panel, Junior Jump Start Trade and Military Panel. So again, really trying to expose students to a diverse set of options. And then Decision Day Senior Exit Interviews. This was a fantastic experience last year, and we will definitely be duplicating it this year, where on Decision Day, May 1st, when everybody has had to make those decisions, we set up a camera in the College and Career Center. We didn't have time tonight to show you the video, but students really reflected well on the relationships that were important to them as they left, things that they would do differently, things that they thought were really helpful from the school guidance program, and obviously able to now incorporate those testimonials and the surveys into planning for the future.
You know, James, what a way to honor the process, to have kids speak about it in that video session, in that space. And all of these are brand new.
Yeah, these are all over the last year, so incorporated, you know, since the last time that we presented, and they were on the docket last year. Like I said, you know, Kim and the department have done a great job of implementing, not just making these plans, but really implementing them and working hard to make sure that we're able to offer all of this. And, yeah, and that student voice piece, obviously, school-wide is important, but something the guidance department is really leading the way in making sure that we're incorporating. Other experiences, you know, one of the things that we heard from students even prior to last year and from parents is it's hard, you know, you get all the mail, you got all the information. How do you know? Can we participate in some of these fairs? So we've been able to find, you know, transportation and get kids to lots of different experiences. So we've been able to find, you know, transportation and get kids to lots of different experiences. The recent college fair at the University of New Haven, that was just, I think, about a week ago, where students got to, you know, tour the college campus, really ask their own questions about college admissions and campus life. You know, Community College Visit Day, you know, the Connecticut State Community College System is really doing a lot of outreach, and so, and many of our students, as you saw, do attend there. So all of these experiences collaborating with different departments. You know, upcoming, we have the Career Manufacturing Roadshow, you know, it's coming to Western Connecticut, so we're offering, we've put that in the newsletters also to make sure, you know, parents and students can sign up. So to really make sure that we do, we, you know, uncover and remove every rock we can, and that we're capable of, to expose students to these ideas. And then onsite experiences, the ever-evolving Junior Jump Start and the Senior Kickstart, which is coming up, as our student reps talked about, and next week, you know, when the juniors and sophomores are in their PSATs, you know, our seniors will be getting, you know, one last chance before those application deadlines to really, you know, refine those resumes, to really have counselors, you know, talk to them about, you know, financial aid, how you apply, you know, so that, you know, really making sure that, you know, throughout junior and senior year, when that's really, you know, prime time for, you know, for making those decisions, that we're providing those experiences. New partnerships on, you know, providing financial aid, we had our financial aid information night last week, you know, which got very good reviews. We got, you know, parent feedback that they're very appreciative of that. We've opened that up to not just senior families, but also invited junior families as you're preparing, because post-secondary education is a giant investment, someone paying two tuitions right now, I can assure you. I, you know, should have gone to more financial aid sessions when they were younger, but we're providing that for our families as well. So, and then obviously, we've had a constant stream of college reps coming into the College and Career Centers, so students can sign up during the school day, and if they're interested, they can meet with a rep from that college, get more information, ask those types of questions, you know, so we have a lot of great experiences for our students and our families. And, you know, as we're wrapping up here, coming toward the end, you know, really increasing the professional experiences of our counselors. Obviously, really important for our counselors, you know, in New Fairfield, being a relatively small district, you know, to make sure we don't get in the bubble of just doing things or just talking to those institutions that, you know, that we normally attend, that sort of thing. Actually, you see in one of those, the University of New Haven-Italy Program, Kim was able to attend that over the summer, didn't miss any school to do that, but really learn not only about that specific program, but many, you know, colleges offer that, even as soon as first-year students, to have those international experiences as part of their education. So just making sure that we're doing everything we can with our counseling staff and making use of those professional learning days to send them to workshops and do those campus visits, all for the betterment of our students. So the counseling department had an outstanding year, not only in, you know, what are, you know, where our students were able to go, but really being able to plan for our future classes.
James, can I ask you a question about high school partnership, only because I work a lot with it at my school? We're doing it in the capacity of offering the online courses for students, correct? I don't know, and I'm sure you probably know this, but it's a three-way initiative, so students have the option of actually going to the college campus and taking a live course, or we will send college faculty into schools to teach college-level courses. So, so far, I'm only familiar with the online component that we've been doing. I'm just wondering if maybe it might be a good idea to look into doing some of the other pathways for it?
Absolutely. Actually, one of the many tabs open on my computer are some notes from recent professional learning that we've done on concurrent enrollment programs, as well as programs, you know, that are, you know, we have some programs, including ECE programs, that happen within the high school where our teachers are certified by either UConn or WestCon right now, so students can earn that college credit. But exploring as part of, you know, as part of like our ed-advanced, you know, experience where students, that's obviously at the hospital, but, you know, starting to try to incorporate those into, as you said, our pathways.
Just from my experience, there is a big difference between young people who start out their college career taking an online course versus actually sitting in a college-level classroom, and I think if they could have the opportunity, one way or another, to do that before they actually start their college career, it would make a tremendous difference.
I agree, and it's something we're exploring. As you know, not part of this presentation specifically, but one of the things that we're looking into this year is the future of our Capstone experience and what that might look like, and that is on our list of things to explore, are, you know, maybe it's, you know, leaving school early to take a class. Sometimes the scheduling of those things can be tricky, which has been a hang-up for some students that I know we've wanted to offer that as, you know, if there's, there are students who have, you know, kind of exhausted all of our, you know, levels of a particular subject area, things like that, so it's definitely something.
My point is, I'm just pitching for the CT States, and we will come to you.
Yeah.
Yes, we will. So just keep that in mind.
Yep, it's on our list, so that's good.
So, James, what would you say, what's been the difference? I mean, there's, you know, we talk about continuous improvement, and this is real evidence of that. What was the shift in thinking to initiate all these different programs and opportunities for kids to really see what's out there?
I think, I mean, I think one of the biggest reasons we've been able to make these advances, these shifts over the last couple of years, is allowing, you know, and Kim in her position, the time to really focus on college and career. As you recall, you know, a couple of years ago, we added back a counselor that had been, you know, cut in previous years. That has freed up time for Kim to plan, to, you know, to, you know, bring these programs in, to set up meetings with, you know, all, you know, all of the people on the other side of high school, you know, and allow the counselors time to not only expand, again, not part of this presentation specifically, but thinking about, and our students could tell you, during our Rebel Block time, you know, there are a couple of times every year where our counselors now, and we're at the beginnings of that, but are able to run sessions themselves multiple times per year with every student. That would not have been possible two years ago. The, you know, the personalized meetings for planning would not, you know, would not have been possible, in addition to all of the other types of support that our counselors have to offer. This is just a slice of what they do every day, and so I really think it's bringing back that manpower, if you will, that brain power to be able to meet the needs of students and personalize the experience.
So an investment in kids, right? That's what that represents, in my opinion, and I think the right person was found for that work.
Yeah, Kim's, she's one of the hardest workers I know, and really...
Still working, as you said.
Yeah, she's still working, you know, but I, and I think that that ability to really chart these things out, to, and to do things like, you know, to Samantha's point, educate the administrators on what's out there, so that, as we're working with Chris, to really rethink our pathways, really rethink those experiences, I think we'll have some really great things on the horizon in the next year.
Nice. Thank you. Very nice. Anybody else? Questions?
I love it. Like she said, she was here, she took our feedback, she looked at what kids wanted and needed and, like, put it into action, like, that's exactly what we want to see happen, and I, it's exciting to see, and I love that there's that mind shift, you know, I'm the, like, big pusher for the trades. I just like that there's that shift, that you don't have to go to a four-year college, there are other options out there for you, so I think that's important for kids to understand, too, and we see them, like, almost alleviate some anxiety and stress when they have to feel like they have to fit into one pathway, so I, we're helping a lot of different factors, I think, by doing this work, so I appreciate everybody's work.
Very nice.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for standing in.
Of course.
Yeah, thank you, James.
It'll be better next year when things back.
Please thank Kim, too.
All righty, moving on. New Fairfield Public Schools twenty-six, twenty-seven draft calendar.
Thank you, Tom. Just want to highlight for the board that annually, a committee comes together, builds the calendar for the following year. This year's no exception. We met a few weeks ago with representatives from each of the bargaining groups, as well as the PTO, and we drafted a calendar for your consideration for twenty-six, twenty-seven. This is a first read, so this is informational tonight, and then we come back in November. Based on any feedback that you have, we would look for your approval of a final twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar. You'll find that this calendar, the committee felt that the current calendar, it's been in place for a couple of years now, has been working well. They wanted to keep that rhythm where we start just before Labor Day, so you've got a few days for teachers to prepare, then students start on a Thursday, and then, you know, we get out in a reasonable time in June and allows enough time for snow days, and it's been pretty light in terms of the number of snow days in recent years.
I just jinxed it.
Yeah, I saw something going around today.
Mildening, yeah.
Trying, no, well, no, trying to guess, when's going to be the first snow day? So it seems to be a thing.
It's supposed to be mild again.
But, yeah.
There's no snow days.
But at any rate, you have a detailed memo in your packet that outlines, you know, each month and what the plan is. Just so the public knows, we are required to have one hundred and eighty student days by contract. Our Teachers Association has an additional six. They have a one hundred and eighty-six-day work year, so the calendar, those are the two parameters, and what we look to do is try to maximize instruction, instructional time during the calendar, but there are times where, you know, we will set aside time for professional learning during the course of the year. You see Election Day, students have that day off, and teachers will be in for professional development, so.
Strides, are they back on the New Fairfield Public Schools?
Strides is on our calendar, yes.
Do we not have any kids who are taking classes at Long崎? Is that...
I believe one.
What, how do they, doesn't that severely impact them?
No, who will provide transportation, that's only a couple of times. You know, one week.
Okay. Any other comments at this point? We'll review it and come back at the next meeting if there's anything else. Okay? Very good. We are up to fiscal year twenty-seven budget assumptions.
Thank you. On behalf of Carrie and myself, you heard, well, you heard earlier, an overview, detailed overview of the fiscal year twenty-seven budget assumptions, as we are in full swing in budget development right now. Certainly, you know, our budget is guided by the Superintendent and Board of Education Goals, which are listed here in number one. Again, I'll highlight what I said last time, that our budget is built from the ground up, it's needs-based, it's built by looking at what is the enrollment, what are the needs we have, and we use this zero-based budgeting approach and have been doing that for several years, so we don't just roll over the budget, but we build it from scratch. Just highlighting a few things, if we go to the next page, Quentin, I'll just give you the short version of this. We do explore cost containment, cost avoidance strategies, whether that's in staffing, operations, soliciting, looking out for grants, and other ways to reduce costs, but we are very much guided by the students who are in front of us, the enrollment. So I'm pleased to say the enrollment looks stable, you know, has been, and for the foreseeable future. You will get the NESDEC updated enrollment report probably at our November meeting. I usually ask them to expedite it because it's really helpful when we're doing class sectioning and trying to prepare that for the budget. You can see our class size goals here and the current class sizes listed in number Quentin, if you can move on to the next page, see what else I would like to just point out here. I think really important to note is that we are committed, have a legal, ethical responsibility to meet the needs of all students, and under IDEA in Section 504, provide the services that have been outlined in their individual education plan or 504 plan, so that is another assumption of this particular budget. And then there are several other things here. I'm going to jump down to number twelve. There continues to be a commitment with our capital budget to maintain our facilities in good shape. As you know, we built a new high school, we added twenty classes, classrooms to the Meeting House School, where we're now fully pre-K to five, but in grades two through eight, those are facilities you have to continue to maintain, particularly our middle school that is over thirty years old, that roof, the doors, the windows are all over thirty years old. You'll be hearing from us November, December, in terms of where we're going to be suggesting that the district go and plan for in the coming years, but for FY twenty-seven, we already have a plan laid out. We've alluded to that in our, I guess, our August meeting that we had, in terms of what's up for meeting updating, and we'll come back to that very soon and go through that. But we're very pleased that our capital plan, that is a five-year plan, we are pretty much on track the first three years of that plan, and, you know, we're now looking at year four, and want to maintain our facilities in good condition. So that's the quick highlighted version. Any, happy to take any questions?
Any questions on this end?
Agree.
Any questions? I think we're good. Appreciate that. It's just, this is the kickoff to the budget season, I guess. Appreciate sharing that information. Everything's all ready. Okay, thank you. We're up to Board of Ed Policies, second reading, Sam.
There's three up for a second reading. Next time, we will do the overview and take a vote, but second reading is for Policy fifty-one thirty-one point one, Boss Conduct, Policy fifty-one eighteen point two, Educational Opportunities for Military Children, and Policy fifty-one forty-four point twelve, Challenging Behavior Response Policy.
Thanks. So we vote at the next meeting. Action Items, Personnel Report.
I'd like to make the motion to recommend to the full board for approval of Personnel Report from ten-nine-twenty-five. I'll second, Suzanne.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Acceptance of Donations. We have one from the New Fairfield Diamond Club and one from New Fairfield Baseball Club.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board to accept with gratitude the New Fairfield Diamond Club donation of three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents to purchase a new sound system for the baseball field.
I'll go.
Who's second?
I'll have it.
Thank you. Question, we hear.
Any discussion on that?
Very generous. Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Very nice.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Next one?
I'd like to make the motion to recommend to the full board to accept with gratitude the New Fairfield Baseball Club donation of fifteen hundred dollars to purchase clay for the varsity softball field.
Second. Ed, second that. Any discussion on that?
Ed can have it.
Who got it? Kim?
No, Ed can have it.
Harry or Kim?
Or the father.
So, again, thank you very much. These are generous donations, and they are appreciated. All in favor? Unanimous, yeah. All right, Shared Services MOU.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board to authorize the superintendent to enter into the shared services agreement with the town as presented.
I'll second.
Can I make some comment?
Please.
First, just want to comment on the process. I want to thank Carrie DePue, our Director of Business, as well as Melissa Lindsay for Selectmen, and our Finance Director, Adam. I'm blanking on his last name here, Carrie.
Lawrence.
Lawrence, yes. We spent a lot of time together this summer, actually, working through this agreement, and to get to a point where we've agreed in principle on the terms you have before you, what we, the real benefit of going through this is we've been able to document really what our current practice is in terms of our shared financial services model. We had good debate, we had good discussion, but as we had a new Finance Director come on board for the town, it was great for us because we immediately established a relation, good working relationship on how we operate. So you will see that this agreement, you know... So, you will see that this agreement, you know, really puts into place an updated arrangement from the 2006 agreement. That's the last time that this was updated. This was one of the recommendations from the shared services assessment that we had last spring, so I'm glad to bring that before you. What would happen from here, happy to answer any questions about particular sections of this document, but then if you authorize us to move forward with this MOU, we would then ask the First Selectman to bring it to the Selectmen for their review and approval at their next meeting.
Okay. Any questions on this?
The only thing I had on it, and I'm in total agreement with this, but I know that we're building offices in the school, and the finance personnel will be moved at some point, or will they all be staying in the annex?
We had a lot of good discussion about that as part of this, but we decided that it was not really something to put into the agreement.
Okay.
Because, you know, how we operate in terms of shared services, you know, independent of location, we agree that we'll just, we'll talk about that down the road.
Okay.
You know, our position is, is that the, you know, for payroll and council payable, when we make that move, it really is important for BOE tasks. Yes, to be together, but that is something for, you know, down the road later this year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Again, unanimous. Very good. D is ratification of the agreement between the New Fairfield Board of Education and the New Fairfield Power Educators of CSDA, Chapter 141, SCIU.
So, as the last...
I have a motion.
There's no need for a motion at this point.
Still?
I don't have a date yet for you as to when the association will be meeting to ratify the tentative agreement. The tentative agreement was agreed upon in mid-August. You know, I'm still awaiting to hear back from our attorney as to when the association is planning to have that ratification. And as soon as that happens, you know, we would be able to move forward here. And it is critical that we are able to have this contract solidified so that, you know, for hiring purposes. And also, I think about, you know, our association, there's increases built into those agreements for this current year that would be retroactive once this agreement is applied, but, you know, it'd be nice to have that moving forward sooner rather than later.
So, the goal of this agreement was to obviously increase the salary of paras, the starting pay, and, you know, give them a fair wage because they were, you know, significantly underpaid in comparison to neighboring districts. So, here we are, October 16th. This was done in August, and I would imagine it's impeding hiring paras because, you know, we don't have an established wage for the starting pay for paras, right?
That's correct. You know, generally, what happens with our associations is once there's a tentative agreement, generally goes immediately to the association for ratification and approval, and then the contract is, you know, it's built into the contract once ratified.
Do we know what the holdup is? I'm sorry.
No, I just want to, has there been any changes to the tentative agreement?
No.
Okay.
So, why hasn't it been taken to be ratified?
And that's the question. Yep.
All right, okay, so maybe rhetorical.
I don't understand what the heck is going on. So, all I know is that there was, like, all of this out there over the summer, and not to be mean, but I saw it. There's people, paras downtown, there's signs, like, get this done, get this done. We get it done in August.
In August.
And now, we're waiting on who? Like, I'm in a teachers' union. When we get a negotiated contract...
You're waiting on the leadership.
Our union president is on that.
Waiting on the paral leader.
Here it is, look it over. This is when we're meeting, this is when we're voting, and it should be done. So, for this to not happen two months later, like, I don't understand why the paras aren't, like, given maybe...
They are, they are. They're really, they're upset. They're asking what's going on.
Get on it. We've had this on our agenda.
And they're getting no response from their leadership.
So, they, it wasn't put up for a vote?
No, haven't met yet.
They actually haven't had a ratification.
All right, folks, let's move. Really, we did our job.
That's so disappointing. Like, we want to take care of our staff members, too.
Well, more than that, we want to hire people also.
Absolutely, so we can take care of our students.
Okay. We're up to public participation. Anyone from the public would like to speak? Now's your opportunity.
Is that your way of saying you don't want to hear us?
He just says, shut.
It's kind of like, you know, beating a dead horse. It's in their hands.
I just have a question. Hi, I just have a question, Jennifer Paffos. Who exactly are we waiting for on the contract with the paras at this point? Who exactly is the person that's supposed to make the next step?
Can't answer that question right now. It's public comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry. Anyone else from the public? Would like to speak, now's your opportunity. Okay, future agenda items.
Tentative agreement.
It's a good one. I think we all agree that we want that on the agenda.
That's your thing?
Hasn't it been on our agenda?
We want to make sure it stays until it does. Okay, we're up to, or any other items?
I know we usually get a construction update, but could we add propane?
Propane?
Yeah, specifically.
Yes.
I would agree with that. Okay, Board Member comments?
I just have a quick question. Our last meeting, Carrie gave an update on the propane letter, and you said that the town hall, the council approved it. Where did that letter originate from? Is that coming from the school district or the owner's rep?
Colliers, yes, the colliers, owner's rep. And if you recall, that, I think there's 30 days to respond. So, I think, Amy, it'd be very timely at our next meeting to have an update on where that stands. We didn't have any, we didn't have anything for you tonight, that's why it was not.
We'll play the orchestra. Any other Board Member comments?
Yeah, I do, actually. I have Monday, and then I have actual comments. The Monday is just to please remind all my fellow Board members that we need candy for Trick or Treat Fest. I cannot stand there with an empty bowl because I will get, like, attacked, yes. So, if you're not attending, could you please drop off some candy donations to Central Office between now and next Friday?
So, two bags if you're not attending, one if you are.
I gave you three.
Otherwise, I have to come in Kevlar, so I would really appreciate it.
So, let's make sure we have plenty of candy.
But I also, I just want to take a moment because really, this is our last meeting before the election, and I just want to thank all my fellow Board members to let you know that working with you all is an absolute pleasure. This is a group that I think we've all transcended, politics and partisanship. We all respect and understand that our first responsibility is to the schools and the kids and the teachers and the staff, and that the politics don't matter when we're doing the right thing. And I hope that people just remember the collaboration and the sense of mutual respect that we have for one another when they go to the polls because I would like to see this board stay together. I think we do really good work. So, no matter what happens, I appreciate you all. I just wanted you to know that.
Very nice, thank you. Anyone else?
Make sure you vote.
That, too.
I would just like to invite everyone to see the, try to get out and see the high school drama on October 30th, 1st and 2nd. The kids have been working really hard and doing some great work. A lot of it is actually student-directed, which is really neat, and they put on the whole show, which is great. I mean, they have been working the lights, the direction, the set, the props, and everything. And it's just really impressive to see how hard they work and how much the arts is really been amped up and increased in our school. So, I highly recommend that you go see it, it's going to be hilarious, and it's a great way to support the kids.
Thank you.
One quick thing, I just wanted to thank James again. That presentation was really robust and really exciting to see. I feel like it's been a few years coming, so it's nice to see that. And also, hopefully, everyone comes out to the homecoming football game tomorrow.
Oh, yes, tomorrow.
Surely, what, you'll see the nice field, the lights, so come support the...
And one last thing, I just want to thank Stephanie for stepping up and filling in. Well, we had that big...
We appreciate that, Steph.
We appreciate you.
I like being here.
It was nice having you back.
It's a nice group. I mean, I like being involved, thank you.
All right, anything else? Very nice. Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Amy was on that.
You can adjourn, thanks, folks.